I now declare the Plano City Council preliminary open meeting is reconvened in an open session, that all council members are present. Maria Two will be on Zoom, and Councilmember Holmer is just around the corner. Our first item on the preliminary agendas is consideration and action resulting in executive session. Our second item is discussion and direction of housing and urban development, home funds, and city-related programs, processes, and policies.
Mayor and Council, we have Lori Schwartz with a very short presentation, but I know we also have some speakers that we'll get to immediately after, I think, Lori's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me just a few minutes just to provide a little bit of information before you get into your discussion this evening. I wanted just to give some brief history of the funding that we have received from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is also referred to as HUD. So the city has received a CDBG fund since 1986. This right here would be the number, the amount of funds that we have received without any administration dollars, so it's a huge impact for the community in the last 15 years of over $18 million. Cities have also received home funds since 2004. In the last 15 years, this has been over $5 million into our community. And just for clarification purposes, we have never had a requirement to return any federal funding to HUD from programs that are administered to the city, so all of the funding that we have received has actually gone out into the community or been focused on the administration of those programs. So another question that has come up recently is about the staffing support for our federal programs. So for the last 15 years, there have been six positions that are directly supporting our federal housing programs that are paid through grant funds. These are a rehabilitation program where we're looking at housing community services coordinators. There's two of those. These are the people that take in the applications and also help people work through that process. Then we have two housing rehabilitation project coordinators. Those are the people that work with the contractors and really serve as kind of project managers for those construction projects, and so those have been consistent for the last 15 years. There is also a housing and community services coordinator related to the home funds, so they have primarily been the people that have overseen the first-time homebuyer program, but also working with the CHODOs and other affordable housing developers that are, have received home funds. The other position is our community services grants administrator. This is really the sole person that does the reporting responsibilities to the federal government, so they're the ones that ensure that the funding is being used accurately. We're reporting in the federal system, and so those are, that is a position that has been necessary. Since that time, we have added one position in 2020, 2021, which is specific to homeless services. And so this is a housing community services coordinator. This came about a couple of years ago when we were having increased concern from the city council level that we needed to be able to provide additional homeless outreach, There are some significant differences as far as the way that it works. Home is primarily designed to create affordable housing and homeownership activities, so I've mentioned some of the programs, the first-time homebuyer program, and then also the CHODO, which is a set aside of 15%. One of the things that I'd like to point out about the difference for rehab for home is that anytime you have a rehabilitation project with home funds, you are required to address all deficiencies discovered during construction. So this could mean that if somebody comes into us and says that they have a leak in their wall, we come in to repair the leak, but once we open it up, we discover that it actually has damaged the structure, it's somehow working on the foundation, and oftentimes those projects will expand, as with any other construction project, because sometimes when you open up the walls, you find the things underneath. And so we are required to bring those homes up to code. Now, one of the advantages, though, is also the ability to be a little bit more flexible as far as the way that those grants are used and given to those homeowners, that we have a little bit more flexibility potentially to have forgivable loans or to do grants for them instead of having a payback or a partially forgivable loan. CDBG has been the main bulk of our rehab program as well as our public services. You can see that there is also the ability to do rehabilitation of non-residential structures, and then also public services within certain limits. So our home and CDBG nonprofit partnerships have primarily been under two things: home repair programs and homeownership programs. Home repair has been Habitat for Humanity, Rebuilding Together, and the Plano Housing Corporation. Homeownership programs have been Christ United Methodist, Plano Housing Authority, Plano Housing Corporation, and Housing Channel. Those last two, Plano Housing Corporation and Housing Channel, both served as our CHODOs over the span of our programs. One of the things that just has been noted, our housing market has significantly changed in the last several years, and some of our challenges have really been about the way that we were able to provide home funds for people, and I think that is probably one of the biggest things that we've seen change over time. And our hope is, is that we'll be able to figure out a way to discuss with council some other options for use of home funds, because it is becoming more challenging to do development of housing, and it is becoming more challenging to be able to have first-time homebuyers, because our housing market has so shifted. And this is something that we're seeing not only on our local level, but also nationally. And so there's been a lot of conversations about what should we be doing with home funds long-term. So just in general, I wanted to give you some impact to the community over the last 15 years. CDBG funds have assisted 475 households with housing rehabilitations. There's been almost 70, well, over 7,700 individuals and households that have received assistance through social service, and that's with our nonprofit partners. Home funds have been able to help 95 households with housing rehabilitations, and then our first-time homebuyer assistance has been 143 people. And then we also have homebuyers educated, over 2,300 that have been received. So what I would like to share is that, you know, this has been a tremendous impact to the community. We have, you know, this goal of being able to preserve our housing in neighborhoods here. It is in alignment with our comprehensive plan, and I just want to show you an impact video that we had, just that gives you, it's a very short one, I promise, just telling you a little bit about what has happened.
The housing rehabilitation program allows the city of Plano to create livable and sustainable communities through HUD funding.
One great recipient had this to say about a home we rehabbed in 2019. "The housing rehab program greatly impacted our lives. I'm a mom of four kids, and the program gave us the opportunity to live in a safe home that we could not otherwise afford. It provided us stability before we were constantly moving from place to place."
In 2017, the home of Ms. Perez had a dangerous electrical system, and the Cinder block foundation was sinking to the ground. The house only had two rooms. The kids were having to sleep in the closet.
I was given options, and my kids and I got so excited to make choices about our home. The housing rehab program allowed us to stop moving and gave my children stability.
Another grant recipient wrote us after we rehabbed his home. "I used to be so worried that the original home was actually going to fall down."
In 2018, the home of Mr. Chancellor was a one-story in one of the oldest neighborhoods of Plano. The house was nearly uninhabitable with safety hazards and severe plumbing, foundation, electrical, and air cooling issues.
My new home has me still excited after three years. I can't believe it actually happened.
Preserving these neighborhoods through the housing rehabilitation program many times gives residents the opportunity to remain in the only home or neighborhood they've ever known.
I promised it was short. I know that you were discussing tonight whether or not to continue receiving any of our federal housing funds. So one thing I did want to just give you, just as a quick overview, some of our benefits as a participating jurisdiction or entitlement community. We do receive annual allocations of federal housing money that are earmarked for Plano residents. We have been given access to specialized federal recovery funding over the last 15 years. We had the CDBG R, which was after the recession, plus a lot of recovery monies that were directly focused on the city of Plano in the last several years. We participated in other programs through a larger state process, but these are the ones that were specifically directed to the city of Plano. And then without the HUD partnerships, Plano organizations would have to compete with other nonprofits for state federal funds allocation. So it takes it out of sort of the city being able to ensure that we are, we're giving it to Plano organizations, and puts it into a competitive statewide process. And then just wanted to give you a little bit of detail about some community feedback and roundtables that were going on right now. One of the things I wanted to share is that we did have some feedback from residents a number of years ago, and I want to apologize, it's not home program, it's CDBG, just to allow some funds for rental properties. These are specific to one to four units. But then one of the other things I wanted to share, and I know a lot of council knows already that we're in the process of doing these roundtables. As part of our strategic plan that we completed in September of last year, one of the things we really wanted to do is get out and listen to the community. One of the things that we have started is, is, you know, it is, we've had a tough three years getting through COVID. A lot of our residents have really struggled. We've had a lot of recovery programs, but, you know, we are now at the end of those, and now what? And so what we're trying to do right now is to really listen to our nonprofit partners, to our homeless services providers, our realtors, we met with them this morning. We're having incredible feedback, and we have been very grateful to have the participation. I am looking forward to sharing their recommendations and suggestions to council once we've completed this process, but it has been incredible, and we have, we have heard a lot, and we have a lot of recommendations that we want to seriously consider. But I wanted you to know that that is something we had planned and are executing, and we are grateful for the participation and what we're hearing. But then lastly, we're also meeting with our nonprofit partners. We're trying to listen to what their needs are and to try and make adjustments as necessary. But just overall, that is just a very quick synopsis. I'll be available for any questions you might have as you go through your discussion this evening, and I will be here at the dice.
Thank you, Lori. We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna have the two speakers for this particular item speak first, and I'm gonna hand it over to Councilman Grady.
The first speaker is Doug Nichols, and he will be followed by Kathy Ward.
Good, three minutes. Mayor, council persons. My name's Doug Nichols. I'm here to suggest we have turned a city of, the city of Plano crisis regarding persons experiencing homelessness and food insecurity into a disaster. I've been in Plano for four decades. Besides my homestead, I have family home rentals, properties, single-family home rental properties at affordable housing prices at or below 67% of market rate, just to make sure that folks coming out of homelessness have a home. I'm Executive Director of Bed Start, founded in 1995, three decades ago. Most of the folks we provide to at no cost are coming out of some kind of homelessness. Last year, we delivered 1,800 beds and $1.2 million worth of furniture at no cost to these individuals. 20% of that was in Plano, so you do the math on how many beds people were sleeping on the floor here in Plano. Additionally, over seven years ago, I've started to lead a group called People Who Love People, the street outreach ministry, building relationships with those unsheltered and food insecure. We delivered, or we provided and shared 600 meals in a year, and most recently, we provided the hot breakfast for all of the Plano overnight warming station residents. During these decades, I've witnessed substantial growth, growth focused on high-end housing, ignoring the cries of the citizens sinking into poverty. I've seen city services focused on households with means, especially during the pandemic, when even restrooms and food availability were off limits to the unsheltered and the pedestrians. You had to have a car to go to Minis. More recently, I've witnessed a huge growth in the attention of the city of Plano to resources and resources allocated to those experiencing homeless, yet the crisis is escalating into a disaster, death included. People freezing behind convenience stores, day laborers in the lawn care business dying of exhaustion in between high-end homes, death during the pandemic along the Dart Rail Station. By the way, none of these get publicized at all, but everybody knows about them on the streets. And more recently, my friend Callie, who died of a strangulation in the middle of the night, sleeping on the streets here in Plano. My suggestion is to avoid a homelessness disaster by reducing the staffing of, that address poverty, homelessness, and food insecurity, and engage local nonprofits and other tax-exempt entities to fulfill their mission and purpose that allows them nonprofit status. We all need to stay in our lane, doing what we are called to do.
Thank you.
Hi, thank y'all so much, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. My name is Kathy Ward. I've lived in Plano since 1991. I'm here, I had sent out to a number of you, and I got responses back as well, from y'all, as well as staff, about neighborhood services. It is, it has come to my attention that we have 61 employees in neighborhood services. I think that's approximately correct. Is there a format where we can look at, especially as we discuss all these hugely important topics, like what the gentleman just brought up about homelessness and the deaths in the city? What the job descriptions, the job titles and descriptions are for all 61 of those employees? That's a question that's, and if that doesn't exist, can we have that? Is that a recommendation I can make moving forward?
Ms. Ward, I believe our HR department reached back out with those job descriptions.
It was for about 11 positions, unless I misunderstood what I was sent.
I'm trying to find out, like, from A to Z. Sure.
Not who the employee is, but
Of course.
What the position is.
Absolutely. We're happy to share that information.
Okay.
So if it, all 61 are included within that 11, or if there's additional to that, we'll make sure we follow up with you.
Exactly. Okay. Thank y'all so much, and I appreciate y'all's service. Thank y'all.
Sure.
Councilman Grady.
Thank you, Councilman. I wanted to talk openly about this issue, because obviously, some regulations called Open Meetings Act really require me to discuss this in an open session and not individually one-on-one, which would break that rule. There are lots of points that I would like to make, and I'll make them as rapidly as possible. All of you received an email, I think shortly, which showed four columns of funding. It was labeled 2022 CRC Nonprofit in Housing Resources, and it was a very good breakdown of how the funds are being used. But it also is a, it also points out to me how the funds may not be used, and that's the concern that I have, that I wanted to talk with you about tonight. As we can see on that document, under CB, CDBG funding or under home funding, and I wanted to really kind of look at home funding this evening, so that we can isolate some of these discussions. What I, what I'm really seeing on here is that the funding, as it's being used, is being used internally, not externally, and that's my concern. My concern is getting, as Mr. Nichols indicated, getting the funding out into the community so that the funding can be used by the community for the people that it is intended to be used for, and not being used administratively. So when I start looking at home funds that are used for rehab, and when I look at CDBG funds that are being used for rehab, and I see positions that are now between six and eight in an organization for the rehabs that are being done, I have a concern that we're building a department of general contractors, and we're not really getting that money out into the community. So my ask and my discussion is really, we need to, A, take a look at our departments and figure out, do we really need all of these people in the department doing these types of jobs? Or are there other people that are in the community that can do these jobs, and we can get the money out to them instead? That's one point. Another point is, is that when we do many of the distributions of funds through a grant process, I'm going to ask that staff furnish to you the rubric that is used by the Community Relations Commission in analyzing the presentations of the groups that come in, and here is the reason why. Some of the questions on there, I don't really think get to the root of the issue and the problem. I think the root and the issue of the problem is, what do we have in the community that's going, that's going wrong? What do we need to do? Is it a housing issue? Is it a homeless issue? Is it a healthcare issue? What are the issues that we're trying to strive to fix with these dollars when they go into the community? And I don't really see that being the focus. When I look at some of the questions that are in the rubric, which basically state in general, how well did the presenter answer your questions? How well did the presenter give you a demonstration of what they do? I don't think that that really is addressing what we need, and so I think we need to take a deeper look at how that process works and how the funds are distributed. So for example, if I take a look at the home funds, I know that as a council, and I, several council meetings ago, asked the question, how much did the council recommend being used on any project? And the answer was $55,000. I then asked, would you, are there any other times that you would use more than $55,000? I think we heard a little bit about it again this evening, but sometimes, again, when you open up a wall, you might find that you have plumbing issues, and the plumbing has damaged a baseboard or something of other nature. But I think that if it's big enough, it ought to come back to the council for discussion, because there are three homes in 2020 that $120,000 was spent on a home, $110,000 was spent on a home, and, I'm gonna look at my notes, I think it was $101,000, yes, $101,000, $106,000 that was spent on the third home, to rehab it. Now, if I was to take a look at it, I would say, was this a plumbing issue, or was this another issue? I opened up a wall and found something. When I see roofing, foundation, siding, windows, doors, HVAC systems, plumbing, electrical, and it runs through the entire list, the only thing missing in one home is they didn't replace the water heater, I begin to wonder if that was really necessary or not. That was a great win for someone. $122,000 spent on a home that probably appraised for $169 at the time. So I have a concern as to when we say what is needed. Now, if the home is one of the homes that was on the video tonight, and really in bad condition, then bring it back to us and let us make a determination. But when we say $55,000, I think that that's kind of the standard, because we're trying to spread it as far and as wide as we possibly can, and there's, there needs to be some onus by homeowners of owning their own home and being able to afford not only repairing it, but being able to afford having a home. And I don't think it should be all borne upon us for homeownership. Homeownership is expensive, and we all know it, that it's expensive. So that, that is another thing. And so when I boil all this down to one finite thing, I think our process internally needs to be reexamined as to how we're using the money. I don't mind using the money. I love going out into the community and getting things fixed, but it's the way that the money is being handled internally, and I think we could see that again in the second sheet that the city manager sent us, which was a spreadsheet. Because as we look at the individual organizations that receive dollars, we only see in, in the home funds, really, two organizations that are not labeled city of Plano. We only see four organizations in CDBG funds that are not labeled the city of Plano. So it's smaller and smaller groupings of organizations that are actually getting the funds, and we end up doing it. And we can see it even on the bottom line, where we take a look at grant administration under CDBG on the spreadsheet that you have. When you also take a look at the spreadsheet under home funds, the majority of the funding is falling under the city of Plano. And so that's when I begin to question, how are the funds really getting out into the community? And that's the push that I have been asking for over and over, as to getting, getting the funds out into the community and doing the work that those funds were intended for, and not really having it done internally or by city staff. It needs to be done by those that can do it well out in the, out in the streets. I think that we've, we have a process that's coming up very, very shortly, the grant process, and there's a timeline that's on the website saying, in April, we're going to be discussing grants, and we're going to be giving out grants. So we need to take a look at this pretty quick, because these dollars may start going out in the community with the same things that we've done in the past, and the things that we've done in the past, to me, don't seem to be working. And so I am asking us to take a look and make a decision, to take a look at the process that we're doing, and if we can't fix it, then stop doing it.
In council, I, I've had a number of conversations with Councilman Grady, and I will commit to you that, of course, the Rubick, Rubick is happy to share that with council. There is never a problem with sharing the rubric with them. I want to make sure two things, real quick, and I know that we're kind of running up against seven, so whether we need to go ahead and gavel out and restart this and start that in a second, but I also wanted to ask Lori on the $55,000 and the bringing up to code issue.
I'll let you answer that in a minute, Lori. Let me go ahead and gavel in the regular meeting. I now declare the Plano City Council is reconvened in an open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Iman Azhar Subedar, with Islamic Association of Collin County, and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge, led by Daisy and Brownie Troop 6584, with St. Mark's, the Evangelist Catholic Church. Would you please rise?
Let us all pray. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, dear Lord of the universe, we come together today to thank you for the opportunity and ability to utilize your granted tools of time, health, and prosperity to pursue a world of stability and harmony. The mere fact that we awoke this morning, we are grateful. The ability to breathe, move, and communicate, we are thankful. The opportunity to make a change for the better, we are hopeful. In acknowledgement of these all blessings and more, we pray in your name, O Almighty One, as the flames of tyranny and injustice engulf our world, allow us to restore civility and justice. As humanity fractions into sects and groups, allow us to demonstrate the power of unity. As a bloodshed of innocent ones become the norm, allow us to preserve life and refuge humanity. As our elected officials deliberate the city's policies and discuss the needs of its beautiful people, allow them to do so without divisiveness and discord. Empower them to pursue goodness in all things, for all people, at all times, in a selfless manner. Bless them with your gift. Bless them with your gift of understanding and wisdom, O Lord, to answer the call of the moment. Enable them to bridge divides with your grace and serve your creation with complete commitment. Amen. Amin.
There you go. Y'all come, come down. Come down. There you go.
Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individualism.
Thank you. You can be seated. Okay. You good? Come here, let's take a picture. Right here, y'all stand right here. Perfect. Uh-oh, don't drop your purple pen. Here we go, turn around, turn around. There you go, all right, we're all set now. Thank you guys so much. All right, let's do comments of public interest. I think we have two speakers.
We do. The first speaker this evening is Sharon Overall.
Third-hand smoke is the nicotine and other chemicals from cigarettes that remain on surfaces well after someone has smoked. This is what you smell at the bench outside the mall, long hours after someone's even smoked there. These residues can be ingested, inhaled, or absorbed through the skin, potentially increasing the risk of certain cancers and other serious diseases. They get into ventilation systems, curtains, and carpets. These pollutants are not easy to remove. Common cleaners do not remove them. You have to replace the carpets and curtains and paint the walls, and still there may be chemicals in places you missed. They enter the body in three ways. Ingestion, you touch the surface and then you touch your mouth. Inhalation, offgans, offgassing is a term used to describe the release of the residual contaminants back into the air which is inhaled. This occurs while dusting or sweeping or turning on a fan or air conditioner. Absorption, in the same way that nicotine patches deliver nicotine through the skin, nicotine and other chemicals left behind after smoking can be absorbed through the skin. Here's an example of exposure to third-hand smoke. I was staying in a hotel in Arkansas. I smelled a slight musty cigarette smell when I entered the room, but it was a smoke-free hotel. It'd been smoke-free for three or four years, and the rooms had been remodeled. They'd taken all the carpets and drapes out. So I thought that there may not have been anyone in the room for a few days and it was just musty. So, by morning, I had a sore throat. I went to the front desk and asked about changing rooms. I told them that there was a faint odor of cigarettes. The lady at the front desk said that when the smoking was allowed, that the wing of the building I was in had been the smoking wing, but not the other wing. So she moved us to the other wing and I never smelled cigarette smoke again. And you have to realize, this is three to four years after the cigarette smoking had stopped. I remember watching an episode of Property Brothers where a smoker lived. As I removed the pictures from the wall, you saw white areas behind the pictures and tobacco stains on the rest. The third-hand cigarette smoke residue was very obvious. One study from the Cleveland Clinic, clinic exposed human cells, not actual humans, to third-hand smoke and discovered that it may cause damage and breaks in the human DNA. Saying that it is outside and dissipates is not enough. I have the right to not have these chemicals in my yard or on my outdoor furniture.
Twenty seconds.
I want to know that the bench in my front yard is not covered with third-hand smoke residue. I want to know that toys left in my yard are not covered in residue and are safe for children to play with. Smoke doesn't stop at the property line. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Patillo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you were expecting a reprieve tonight, and I apologize for that, but I wanted to commend you all for what I thought was a very thoughtful and productive discussion in the March 13th meeting. I'm here tonight to actually talk more about moving forward and the ordinances that we're looking at in, in moving forward. So there's, there's, continues to be a thirst for data, and so I would like to present some data tonight. This is the reality for Plano. This is Plano's market data. This is your data. This is the reality of compliance. So if you look at what we're seeing here, I've actually gone through each month, I've taken the total market revenue, which is from AirDNA for Airbnb, VRBO. I've adjusted that because we know that not all of the properties in AirDNA's data are actually in Plano, so I've deducted about 10% of that. That removes about 65 to 70 properties out of the data. So that gives you the total revenue, or adjusted total market revenue. And then you apply the occupancy rate to the adjusted TMR, that gives you that figure in the fourth column. And then the occupancy tax remitted, that's reported in the comprehensive monthly financial statement that's available, and so that's why we cut off at 11/22 because the latest version that's publicly available was December 22, which reports the number for November. And those are the combined totals of HomeAway and, which is VRBO and Airbnb. So that last column tells you the reality of what you're looking at. So when I hear comments like, we need to get registration going so that we understand where these properties are, understand this should be the expectation of the data you're going to get. You're going to get much more accurate data from Deckard than you are going to get from here. And even that, as Ms. Day was frustrated when she was trying to report to you what 50% of a moving target is in her numbers on the results from that study. So, what can you do about this number? Well, with the voluntary collection agreement, not much. Basically, everything has to be done based on their data, everything's anonymized, the audit must result in findings against a user, and you must serve Airbnb legally to get personally identifiable, identifiable information. So, Plano has essentially ceded its taxing authority to the platforms without an effective means of audit, and the VCA acts as a shield against non-compliant host. And certainly you can litigate, there are cities that have done that, the state of Georgia, Georgia cities and counties as a class action. But what really needs to be done is terminate the VCAs. Just over 400 agreements for 11,000 jurisdictions since 2014, that's not a success story. And only 11 Texas jurisdictions have followed the state and Plano, which was the first and touted as first, highly publicized, but yet no one seemed to follow you. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and consideration.
We're moving, moving back to item two of the preliminary open meeting. Go ahead.
I just had a couple of other points that I wanted to bring up, and I was watching the clock, so I wanted to make sure we gavelled in on time. And I wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things that I saw in the presentation, and certainly I think staff can, can help with that. One of the presentate, or one of the pieces in the presentation indicated that for housing repair and homeownership, we are using Plano Housing Corporation. When was the last time we used Plano Housing Corporation for that function? Also, it, Christ United Methodist Church, which used to be the house on the corner, they used to use, they used to build a home on that, and I believe they haven't done that for several years. Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, when was the last time that they built the house in the corner?
So, the information that I gave you in the presentation was all of the nonprofits that we've used over the last 15 years. So, so just to clarify, and you're right, the House on the Corner did, used to do a lot of projects for the House on the Corner, but the problem was, is they were finding it difficult to pursue lots in order to place houses, and all of this has been related to the housing market. So, that, that, I don't believe that there was a specific problem with the city process, but what I would say is, is that I think it became difficult for them to continue in the model that they had.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to clarify because it looked like, as it was going through the presentation, to me, and I didn't know if, if the other council members were aware of it, that that was historical data and not current data.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing that I had concerns about, council members, and certainly then, you know, we, we can open up this for any discussion that you might have, is that I have watched this since I was on the Community Relations Commission back in 2008, I think it was, to 2012, somewhere in there. And it used to be under the Planning Department at that point in time, and then the Planning Department split, and we had property standards and some people out of Planning Department become Neighborhood Services. And, and when that formed, there was, I think, 25 people in that entire department, and as Ms. Ward pointed out tonight, it's now 61. And so when I look at the dollars that have been used year after year after year, about 1.6 million in 2013 that we got, and we're getting about 2.3 now, and the number of agencies used to be thick, it's now thin, it's probably gone from nine to 13, nine to 13 agencies back in 2013 to four now. I begin to wonder how we're building and doing the work, and it just always appears to me that it's being done through our internal departments rather than an external source. And I'm just, I, I get concerned that that is not a really good use of, of the dollars, the taxpayer dollars that we're building, more and more people adding to more and more departments when we could be using outside sources.
Lori, would you mind, for clarification purposes, on the staffing side of things? I know that that's come up and we've looked at that, if you wouldn't mind commenting.
Yes, sir. So when Neighborhood Services created, we were 44, and as I had shown here on the staffing support for federal housing programs, that has not increased in the eight years that we have been Neighborhood Services. This has been the same setup for 15 years. So what I would like to say is, is that there has not been any additional monies put towards this, and in fact, that housing rehabilitation supervisor used to be federally funded. Back in FY 2017, 2018, we removed that position through Bruce Glasscock and that, that budget process from being reimbursed from federal funds and made that a general fund position. So, in totality, we have actually reduced the burden on our federal administration dollars over the course of time that we have been Neighborhood Services.
And where's, where have the growth in positions come?
So the growth in positions has been across the board. You know, one of the things that, when we were created, was really the idea of us trying to address our aging community. And as most of you know, every single position has come through a budget process through city council. So we've seen growth in our property standards team, we have seen growth in our neighborhood engagement team, we've seen growth for support services. So, overall, what we have been trying to do is to respond to the need. We are an aging community in many ways. Our, our housing is aging, our, our people are aging, and so the goal of really everything that we do is, is part of our program, is to try and come up with ways to help people, to partner with people, to be able to maintain their homes, maintain their neighborhoods, be able to be more successful as a community as a whole. So really, you know, the, the, everything has been very much an open process, and, you know, we have had growth, but that growth has been specifically linked to the need and the demands of our services and our, our programs. So, I just, does that answer the question? Okay.
For me, but I'm looking at council. It's more important, it's more important that they have it, but I'd like you also to address real quick the housing rehabilitation costs that, that have been shown in that amazing chart that was done with such skill.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So, so I will tell you that at this point, I have asked and tasked staff to go back and look at all of our housing rehab policies. One of my things that I think we always want to do, I, I think about Bruce a lot of times, you know, he had that famous Maya Angelou quote, he always said, you know, we always do good until we know better and then we do better. That's on our office wall. So I want you to know that that is something we look at every single day. And our goal always is, is, you know, we are doing our best every day, but if we find out that there is something we could do better, then we will change the processes. That has happened over time. We've done, done a lot of ordinance rewrites as far as the property standards team. Councilmember Williams gave some great suggestions on how we can improve a lot of our outreach efforts, and so thank you for that, we've incorporated most of those. You know, so I think that you have to look at, how can you actually do better every day? So what we're doing is, is we are taking all of our housing rehab program policies, we're looking at it against HUD regulations, trying to decide whether it's a HUD regulation, a HUD best practice, or whether it's something that over time has, has been created. As Councilmember Grady pointed out, you know, we have had the CRC process for a long time, we've had the consolidated grant process for a long time, I believe from when you were on the CRC. And so, you know, our hope is, is that, you know, maybe it is time to look at this. I just would also like to clarify that the staff does not create the rubric. This is through the CRC. We have a very small part of what that rubric is, and that's primarily telling them if it is applying to one of our consolidated plan goals. So we are looking at, at very basic information, very administrative, the rest of that is the review from CRC. But CRC has been invited to our roundtables, and they were there listening to the nonprofit roundtables the other day, and I think that they are, our hope is, is that we're going to be able to share some feedback from this meeting and from the roundtables so that they can have a chance to look at it. But that, I, I want to be specific about that. But I was asked the question about the $55,000. What I would like to explain to you is, is that our median home price now is $475,000 to $500,000. The applicants that we are having come into our department are at 40% AMI. That's our median, and they are mostly seniors. So when you look at $100,000 after COVID, construction costs have gone up, material costs have gone up, contractor costs have gone up, sales tax, you know, all of the things that are part of a construction project. And the reality is, is that it costs more. If you have done any work on your home, it costs more. And so our hope is, is that we are going to be able to take these seniors that are very low income and be able to have them in safe housing. And while we certainly understand and agree that not, it is, it is costly to own a home, to have seniors that have been in those homes for 30, 40, 50 years, to tell them that because they can't afford the repairs and they're, I, I don't think that our goal is to say that we want them to continue to live in substandard housing. So, you know, we certainly will take direction from council. I'm hoping that we will be able to figure out, you know, a, a process that will be supportive of our community, but also be able to be responsive to council's concerns. But that is our goal, is to try and make sure that people have safe housing. And a lot of these folks just simply do not have the means to be able to repair their houses, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. May I share one last thing? I apologize. The $55,000. So we did have to make a correction to- So, we did have to make a correction to that during COVID. One of the things that we saw was $55,000 did not go very far. So, what we adjusted to, and this is, you know, based obviously on the income qualifications of people, is that they now can get assistance up to 50% of their appraised value of their house. Most of these people are not coming in with this median-priced house, but we did have to expand that in order to address the need.
Shelby.
Thank you, Lori. I have a couple of questions. First, while we're on it, that $55,000, when was that number set by council?
I'm sorry, I'll have to get that information for you. I do not know.
So, I certainly understand the increase in housing costs, housing prices, rehabilitation costs, et cetera. Given that, why was council not requested to increase the $55,000 threshold? If I'm interpreting correctly, it seems like a unilateral decision was made to exceed it.
So, I am going to have to clarify that because generally, council does not approve our rehab policies. So, what I am not sure is, and then I will have to clarify this, is whether or not that was something that council had to approve or some information that was shared with council. So, what I will do is, I will find that information out and get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. One of the other questions I had was, earlier on in the presentation you gave earlier, you noted that Plano organizations would have to compete for federal money if Plano were not a HUD recipient.
Yes, sir.
How do you define Plano organizations there, and why do they not currently have to compete for money?
Okay. So, what I was saying is, is that Plano organizations, so right now, they have the ability to come through the city to apply for the use of these federal funds that we're talking about. So, I'm specifically talking about housing money. So, if we are, if you have a jurisdiction that is not a, either an entitlement community or a participating jurisdiction, so depends on whether you're talking about home or CDBG. And those are based off of our population. So, that's how we become one of those entities. If we do not, or say another size, smaller city doesn't compete, or isn't part of the entitlement or the participating jurisdiction, there is access through TDHCA. TDHCA does get a state allotment of some of these fundings. And so, right now, we have the ability to, this money is earmarked for the City of Plano, and it has to be used for Plano residents. If we do not take federal dollars for housing, then basically, we don't have an earmark for Plano residents. Those organizations could proceed through a statewide process and compete for those funds. But right now, because we have this money allocated, they have access to it through the city.
So, you mean that because we do receive these funds from the federal government, they compete with the city, or with one another for the City of Plano to allocate those funds, but otherwise, they would have to compete statewide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And lastly, to make sure I understand, you said, if I understood correctly, the number of city staff who have been maintaining these programs since the inception has not changed. So, if I understood correctly, there are six staff members who oversee all of this, and so, that's been pretty much constant the entire time? Are those full-time employees?
It has been constant. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if I can kind of move things along, the program policies that they're working on, would that be a direction and have them come back to us and review those as a good first step?
I believe that's a good summation. Here's what I wrote down. I think that the process that we're using today needs to be sent to the council members so that the council members understand what it is and agree with it. And if we agree with it, then we've got a grant process that's coming up like next month. And so, we've got to make a decision on whether we agree with this and how it's being handled, or we, you know, we're going to have this issue rolling forward through the grant process again.
Okay.
Mayor, I would suggest that we have the next agenda discussion before we give concrete direction to staff on this.
What, exactly what do you mean? Oh, well, that's next.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
They're related. So, before we pick a direction and move here, I would suggest we have the next discussion and then give general direction to staff, based on both discussions.
I think I understand both elements of this at this point.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Maria.
Thank you. Lori, I'm, sorry, I'm Echo.
You're doing all right. We hear you.
Lori, I have a question with regard to what Councilman Grady had posed, and that is, it sounded like there are three areas of his concern. One of them was whether or not the administration of these funds from the federal government is now being more expended on administration rather than distribution to the recipients or the intended recipients. That's number one. And number two is whether or not because there is an increase in the amount of money that we're spending on each individual project, that is also reducing the amount of recipients are taking, being able to also see benefit from these money. And the third thing is also whether or not the CRC funding is, the process is, you know, fair to all the people who are participating in trying to obtain entitlements. I think those are the three issues, and I believe the cap and the CRC funding have been addressed. But can you just sort of address the administration part of it for me?
Okay. So, I believe I understand you to be asking, is this, has there been an increase in the administration cost? Is that what you're asking? I would say, over time, due to just inflation, you know, we are capped at a certain percentage that we cannot go above. I would say that where we are is in line with other cities that have in-house rehabilitation programs. It's very normal for cities to have this type of staff-managed CDBG or home rehabilitation programs. But as mentioned, this is the same six positions that we have had since 2008. The positions have shifted in salary just due to normal changes. They track with the rest of the city staff. So, yes, it has shifted up, but that has been entirely in line with every other thing that we have seen for all other staff members across the city. So, there hasn't been any addition other than that.
Has the award from the federal government also increased in appropriate, I mean, in the proportion of the administration costs that has been increasing?
Yes, ma'am. So, we always will have a percentage cap based off of whatever our allocation is each year, and we have never exceeded that, you know. And what I would say is, is that, you know, we have taken steps to try and reduce the administrative burden over time. You know, we are certainly open to additional ways to reduce administrative burden. But what I would say is, is that I think with the amount of dollars that have increased and the amount of staff that has, they do an incredible job. They take care of a lot of homes and a lot of people applying for the program. So, you know, they, this group, this core team, this group of people really, really do a lot within our department.
We'll move on to item three. Discussion Direction Regarding Potential Replacement of Housing and Urban Development Funding from the City Funds and Management and Distribution of HUD or City Funds and Programs. I think, Shelby, you asked for this to be put on the agenda, so I'll put it, give it to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I said, this ties in with the previous discussion. And I think after having listened to that discussion, I feel even more strongly, this has been weighing on me for a few months, and I would like to explore the City of Plano no longer being, this is the punchline, no longer being a recipient of HUD funds, instead replacing the net funds that we receive from HUD ourselves and administering those funds to put to pretty much the same uses that we currently use for HUD funds through our community partners. So, now I'll deliver the punchline, I'll break it down. So, one of the things about being a HUD recipient is the required reporting. So, we are required to produce certain reports to show how we are tracking the use of HUD money. We're required to work within HUD's framework. And now, with new rules proposed by HUD, we're prospectively required to add a whole other report to the repertoire with the overhead that that comes with and the framework that that entails. I've increasingly felt, over the past several months, that the framework that HUD requires us to work through to use the funds that they give us, which are taxpayer funds in the end anyway, has locked us for the past 40 years, really, since we started receiving HUD funds, 37 years, into an artificial way of thinking about how to address these problems in our community. They are very real problems. We follow the HUD checkboxes, we apply the HUD formulas, we say we're going to do these things. And the folks from HUD, principally in Washington, D.C., they don't understand anything about North Texas. One of the biggest things they don't understand is they promote the need for affordable rental property, rental, 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 multifamily, 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 is the Texas property tax system, which absolutely pummels renters and the rental owners. When lower-income individuals are not afforded protections as general rentals are not under the Texas property tax system, they don't get homestead exemptions, they don't get over 65 tax frees, they don't get the limitations on the increase in taxable value, they just get hit full in the face with the tax bill that comes from rising property values. This, I think I've said this from the dais before, but this really got brought home to me in 2019, when, after the Annual Property Tax 101 Seminar I deliver, I spoke with a gentleman who attended the seminar. He had a rental property that he rented to a widow. It was on a fixed income, you know, older lady. Being on a fixed income, she could no longer afford to pay the rent because the property taxes on that property had gone up so precipitously, because property values had gone up so precipitously. And being a rental property got none of the protections that homeowners get. He was then subsidizing her to live in his own rental property because he didn't want to have to evict her. Now, that was maybe a little bit of an outside example, but it's becoming more common. And the, bringing this back to the issue of quote-unquote "affordable housing" and homelessness and everything, HUD has no idea about the dynamics of North Texas and how to address our problems. And when we work within HUD's framework, when we check HUD's boxes, when we apply their formulas, we are addressing the problems in our community according to Washington, D.C.'s way of thinking. Now, what do we do about it? I would like to explore freeing ourselves of that artificial frame of reference. We get around $2 million a year in HUD funds, between home and CDBG. Less than that is the net amount after the City of Plano's cut, as we discussed in the last discussion. That's about one quarter of 1% of our total city budget. That's 1/400 of our budget. I would likewise like to explore coming up with that money ourselves and putting it to the same uses. I think I've been a bit of a broken record about homelessness prevention. I think an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and I think that's a worthy use of the money, but likewise, housing rehabilitation, that's come up a couple of times and relatively recently. And as Lori pointed out, when there are significant structural issues with a home that a low-income homeowner just cannot afford to take care of, that's where these funds can serve a real purpose that we already use HUD funds for. Now, we already have a great mechanism for vetting and distributing city-provided funds through our community partners. Our nonprofit partners, our faith partners are, by and large, much closer to these issues and much better equipped and much more skilled at stretching a dollar than we are. And there's nothing, nothing about a government salary that conveys or imparts any unique expertise about these matters. And we already go through the program with our Buffington Grant Delivery. We evaluate community partners to take care of specific needs. It's not just, here, have some money, everybody do with it whatever you like. We have a very regimented program for that. We track it, we report on it already. But it's according to our terms, addressing the needs in our community our way, which I really, really think we should pursue. That's what I really want to do. Now, if we turn down the HUD money, and we do this ourselves, that money isn't going to vanish, it's not going to go into the ether, it's going to go back into the HUD pool, and it's going to go to a community, to a city that is in much greater need than Plano. Let's face it, as Plano, as the City of Excellence, we are in a far better position to address these needs ourselves than many cities around the country. More, I won't say more deserving, but certainly cities in greater need than Plano will get that funding, maybe cities locally will get that funding. And we can be freed to address these problems in a creative way that adapts to our changing landscape, demography, post-pandemic conditions, et cetera, in a way that HUD is simply not contemplating for our unique slice of Texas. That's it. Thank you.
Any thoughts? Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hold on. Hold on, Maria, I'll call you.
Well, I agree with some of the conclusions that Councilmember Williams has come up with. In the initial, I guess, concerns I had and reason I was interested in taking a look at whether we should continue to take the HUD funds or not, had to do simply with the cost of the administrative overhead. And my thought was, is if by not taking those funds, and as Councilman Williams said, we as a city are in a fortunate position that I think we could make it up and do a good job and continue providing the help to people that we do now. But as we went further along, did some research and information, you know, from the city that essentially, even if we were not to take the funds and we provided the funding ourselves and continued doing the work, we would essentially have, let's say, 80% of the same administrative load on our staff, so that really is not going to save us any money that I thought could have been applied to, you know, doing it ourselves and maybe, you know, enhance and improve the programs. But I don't think that's going to happen if we were to cease receiving the HUD funds. So, my thought would be that if we're going to still have the same administrative burden, we might as well get some of our taxpayer money back to do the good work that we're doing already, providing for affordable housing and homeless programs and things like that. So, just my thought.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to let everybody speak. You've had plenty of time. Let's go around the room. If you have a rebuttal, we can do that.
Well, I just want to get it.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. When you say 80% of the same administrative burden, what is that?
Just as I understand it, from the reports and the forms and things that would still be necessary to be provided to show that we are doing the good work they're doing, we're just now, we'd be doing it with our funds. It wouldn't, it wouldn't really eliminate a lot of the reporting requirements that we have to do now. And that was what, one of my thoughts was, it would give us more freedom to do better work locally with our own funds with less restriction on administrative functions, but I don't think that would happen if we were to stop giving it. So, again, I would proponent, when we pay money, as you said, out to, you know, to the federal government, when we have an opportunity to get it back, to do good work with our, in our own city, I think, you know, we probably should continue doing that, based on what I know now. Okay? Thanks.
Mayor Proten.
I just have a question for the city manager. So, I know... So I know $2 million doesn't sound like a large portion of our budget, but it would have to come from somewhere, so where do you think that it would come from? What would we be taking away to come up with this $2 million?
Mayor Protam, I think it's, first of all, it would come from the general fund would be the source of the funds. But I think it's a little ahead of our budgeting process, I would want to consider that as part of the overall totality that we consider the budget. There's a number of things that will be coming forward this year, and actually tonight, Karen Rhodes is going to go ahead and present the three-year financial forecast, which actually starts our budget process. So I think it's, it's always a challenge to make decisions without linking them together for the total aspect of the budget, so I wouldn't want to get too far ahead of that. However, if council gives that direction that says incorporate this into the budget, it would have to come back through the general fund.
Any thoughts?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So I think that Councilmember Williams raises some excellent points, you know, it's very unfortunate that the federal government taxes individuals from communities across the country, including Plano, and then doles that money back out to those communities with strings attached on how it can be used. It would be much better if the federal government left that money in our community and in other communities across the country so that the people's local elected representatives could create local solutions to the critical issues of homelessness, housing affordability, land use, and zoning, instead of having to go with one-size-fits-all federal prescriptions for how to deal with those issues. That being said, we're not going to be able to change the taxes that are being levied by, by the federal Congress and the federal government, whether we take these funds or not. You know, if, if we don't take these funds, we'll have to essentially tax Plano residents a second time after, after they've already paid those income taxes to the federal government to then do this locally. So while I think Councilmember Williams raises great points, because, you know, the federal government creates unhelpful requirements that do not help us solve the unique local needs of our community, that doesn't mean that there's no utility in these funds at all. And the things that the federal government's not allowing us to do, we could potentially look at appropriating additional money to do those things, but then it wouldn't have to be the whole $2 million, it would be whatever the federal government's not letting us do. If there's $300,000 that, you know, that we can't do with the federal funds that we need to do in Plano, that would be a lot less expensive than the whole $2 million. So while I, while I do think it's a great point, because the federal government is, you know, is taking money, and really all they do is add strings and give it back to us, that's bad policy. But I don't see how our residents benefit from us replacing 100% of these funds with their property taxes, so unfortunate. And, and I understand, by the way, that Councilmember Williams, you know, makes a great point that the federal funds don't go away, maybe they go to a needier community, which is great, but I still just, you know, don't, don't ultimately think that this will be in the city of Plano's best interest, so.
Deputy Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. Despite the fact that Councilwoman Williams, I respect you and love you, I do not agree with you at all with regard to looking at different directions and also to even consider the replacement of HUD's money with our own city money. I believe that the HUD was established for a reason and for a very good reason. Not everybody is like the city of Plano, where we are an excellent city in which we not only protect those people who are low-income, we protect fair housing for every individual that comes into our city, and that we try to make sure that affordable housing is available through the money that we are allowed in our budget as well as from the HUD funding. Not all cities are like that, and that's the reason why the HUD policy wasn't created in the first place to protect. Now, I understand that leadership takes two forms. One of them is a leadership of revolution. In other words, you go out of the system, you break the system, and then you revoke and rebel against the system. Then there's another leadership in which you work within the system. And I believe that in the city of Plano, we need to work within the system, and we need to use what is given to us as tools, because after all, we are a city, one of the many cities in the state of Texas. However, you know, if the state of Texas wanted to take on something as revolutionary as, you know, the breaking away from the husband, that's, that's a different story. But as a city, with our taxpayers' dollars on, on the line, I agree with Councilman Smith and I agree with Councilman Rick Adeli, that we need to take the tax dollars that are given back to us, and we need to use it in a way that will benefit our residents in the most beneficial way, and working within the HUD framework and working within the HUD system. So I absolutely will not go down the direction of even having further discussions or even a consideration of a replacement topic. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll just take a hand count on the direction here. I think I've heard those that want to continue receiving housing and urban development funding, please raise your hand, and, okay. And those that do not?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mayor? I can't hear you very well.
Well, you just gave a lovely speech, and I think, I think I know your direction, but I asked for you to raise your hand if you wanted to continue receiving HUD funds. Okay, so that would be six, two. It's okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, did we have, since we mixed those two a little bit, did we have clarification on item one, because?
Item two.
Item two, yeah, okay, sorry, item two. I wanted to make sure we had clarification.
I think so. Mark and Lori, I think we...
So there were several, several areas to bring back to council, and first was the updated process that we're in the process of reviewing, to bring back to council as quickly as possible, as soon as we've reviewed that, the grant process, including the rubric, for council to be able to see the grant process, and I would include that with the application and any materials that go with that, that council is able to see those aspects as well as the rubric, and bring that back in a timely, as timely a manner as we can possibly get it to try to beat that grant process timeline, so that council can lay eyes on that and provide any feedback that might be concerning with regard to that. The other element that we were asked to go back and look at, I believe, was the aspect of the policy, program policies with regard to work that's being done by staff in providing a report back to council on, on those elements.
Okay, yeah, because I think the second part that you just mentioned is important for a couple of reasons. One, I really don't want us to be a whole series of general contractors within the city doing rehabs, and we're doing the, we're doing a GC work, and then, and then where there are a lot of really good general contractors out in the community. And so I think we need to use the community more than our own, our own people. So I wanted to, I wanted to stress that from the standpoint, I also wanted to stress from the standpoint that if we, you know, again, as I mentioned, if we can't fix something, then we need to stop what we're doing. And I say that especially on the home funds, which is why I voted the way that I did on the third measure, especially on the home funds, because it comes with an earmark for a CHODO. And 15% has to be spun off into a CHODO. If you don't have a CHODO, eventually that money has to go back, and it makes us look bad. So we've got to do something there to fix that.
So last thing, we do currently have a CHODO, it's not located in Plano, they're, we're doing work in Plano, but they're out of Fort Worth, so we do currently have the CHODO. And to my knowledge, and I'm just double checking, I think we've turned back one element of funds as far as federal funds.
It was actually state funds.
Thank you.
And that was because one of our nonprofits was not able to expend it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I agree with you, Councilman, if we get the funds, we need to spend the funds in, in the community, and we will bring back those reports and, and those updated policies and processes.
All right, item four, consent and regular agendas. Item five, council items for discussion, action on future agendas. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda.
No, we, we went into the regular meeting and it just carried over from the preliminary. We're good.
We were the hare and the tortoise, and we just caught up with the hare. All right, consent agenda.
The consent agenda, the consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. It's up to you, Lisa, you call the second if you'd like. I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda, please vote.
Maria, yes, yes.
Thank you, Maria. So that's eight to zero. Motion passes.
Public hearing items, applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items, the presiding officer, officer will permit public comment on the items not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, consideration to approve an increase to the current awarded contract amount of $22,831,865 by $4,699,665 for a total contract amount of $27,531,530, there's too many numbers, for Collin Creek Culvert Improvements Project Number 6804.1 from Regal Incorporated doing business as Regal Construction Incorporated for the Engineering Department and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
All right, good evening, my name is Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering, and tonight the item before you is a change order for the Collin Creek Culvert Project. This change order is needed because the design has been revised, there's been steel that has been added to the design to ensure its life expectancy, and there has been steel that has been adjusted from a placement. From a schedule standpoint, there already is steel in the existing tunnel, so some of that will have to be changed, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have on this project.
Thank you, Caleb. Mayor Protam.
I just wanted to clarify or confirm that even if the concrete mall development wasn't going to happen in its current form that we're working on, at some point, these culverts, which were our responsibility, they would have had to be reinforced, whether we had a new mall or not, correct?
That's correct, yeah. Those were built, I believe, in '79 or '80, they're over 40 years old, they would have to be rehabbed.
Great, thank you.
Any other, any other questions for staff? Do you have a motion? This is not a public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion as second to approve agenda item number one. Please vote.
Maria, do you vote yes?
Thank you. Motion passes eight to zero. Thanks, Caleb. Item two.
Item two, consideration to approve a settlement agreement between the city of Plano and Collin Creek Development LLC regarding design of culverts and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents consistent with the deal points listed herein and as presented by staff.
Mayor and council, the change order required some cost sharing between us and our partners, and this would approve the settlement agreement to do that cost sharing.
Motion to approve this item.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion as second to approve agenda item number two. Please vote.
Maria, do you vote yes?
Thank you. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item number three, discussion and direction regarding certify, certification of emerging and reliable transportation technology program, SWIFT Cities.
My name is Brian Shewski, Plano's Transportation Engineering Manager, and today I'm going to give you a brief overview of a transportation program that North Central Texas Council of Governments initiated this year, I'm sorry, initiated last year. So if you recall, October 2022, Caleb Thornhill, excuse me, gave a presentation on this, this new program, and, I need a, I need a drink. I'm getting over a cold. Caleb gave a brief presentation and sought council concurrence to submit an application under this transportation program. It is for innovative transportation technologies, and COG had developed this program and initiated certification process. Two companies had submitted to COG, that was JPODS and TransPod. And we decided that we would like to, we wanted to submit on JPODS to begin the discussions with JPODS. We got council concurrence, and we did submit, and we did get selected by JPODS to begin discussions. Discussions, quite frankly, did not go very far. We requested specific information from JPOD, and they have yet to provide that information. So the discussions aren't dead at this point, but it doesn't appear that they're going to be moving forward either. So fast forward to today, and COG has another round, round two of this transportation technologies program, and one firm has submitted called SWIFT Cities. SWIFT Cities is actually a spinoff of Google. It was, all the technologies were developed under Google for a very specific point-to-multi-point personal transit system that Google wanted to develop for one of their campuses. They developed the program, I'm sorry, they developed the technology, I think they actually decided not to implement it, but they spun it off into a separate, separate company. SWIFT Cities, like JPODS, is a point-to-multi-point personal aerial transit system. Each vehicle in the systems would roughly carry four individuals, and similar to JPODS, SWIFT Cities would use a phone app to schedule a ride and pay for the ride. That's the, that's the comparison, I'm sorry, that's the similarities between the two, but there are some major differences between the two companies. One is just the infrastructure required. JPODS requires a cantilevered fixed guideway for their, their aerial system, and their support structures are fairly close together. SWIFT Cities uses, actually uses a cable system, and so they can actually go 300 feet before they have to have support structures. That actually translates into significant cost savings, so if you look at the cost on this particular slide, it's roughly half the price of JPODS, SWIFT Cities is. And the other big difference is just the electrical service, so both systems use batteries for their operation of their vehicle, but... So both systems use batteries for their, operation of their vehicle, but, I'm sorry, JPODS uses solar for everything else, and JPODS, I'm sorry, and Swift Cities uses electrical service for their stations, at which point they would recharge their batteries for their, their vehicles. As far as station configurations, Swift Cities is actually very flexible. They can go at-grade for their stations, they can go aerial for their stations, they can go within the public right-of-way, they can go on private property, they can be small, have a small footprint, they could have a large footprint depending on the demand. And they, they can actually be enclosed or open. So enclosed could be completely with HVAC, say they have a very high-demand location that might have seven or eight stalls to pick people up and then move them through, through the system. And as far as the routing is concerned, it really depends on demand, it depends on the support of the, of the properties. For instance, if a corporate campus does not want to have a station at their corporate campus, obviously, we probably wouldn't put one right next to them. This is a map that we actually submitted for the JPOD application last year, and it's at roughly eight miles, if you look, the, the yellow part is eight miles of, of potential routes that we could have in the Northwest Plano area with potential extensions. We plan on submitting something very similar for Swift Cities, but we also plan on submitting a much smaller two-mile segment to give a starter or pilot program for Swift Cities to consider. And right now, we're considering the, a loop around Legacy West, Legacy Town Center North, which would utilize the streets of Legacy Communications Headquarters and, and Parkwood. And so what do we know at, at this point? We've already been through the process once, the process hasn't changed, we're very familiar with the process. It's, it's very simple and straightforward. There's no financial commitments at this point. We can submit the application, no, no commitment, no financial commitments, we can begin deliberations, we can actually conduct, be part of a feasibility study. Again, still no financial commitments is, as part of the city. Depending on how the public-private partnership is set up, we might have a financial commitment in the future, but right now, they're anticipating that the private equity firm that they team up with would fund the, excuse me, fund the entire thing. The only commitment that they have requested of any applicant is staff time for the feasibility study, which we anticipate will be somewhere on the lower side of 100 hours. So what are we asking today is the same thing that we asked, Caleb asked last, last fall, is council concurrence to submit an application for Swift Cities. And I'll open up for any questions.
Thanks, Brian. Councilman, great.
Other than the Regional Transportation Council, we have talked about this process and compared this to the JPOD as well. We've had some pretty good in-depth discussions, in fact, on this. I think two of the major things that we talked about that we found most beneficial, which is why I'm encouraging the, my fellow council members to approve this, is, number one, the funding is already there. That was one of the stumbling blocks that we had, is they already have a private equity company putting funding into this project. Number two, they've already built two of these. So it isn't a concept that's sitting on a piece of paper, they've actually built two functional units. So it's, it's something that they've already experienced, and we're not, you know, the first out of the chute. So I just wanted to add that into the discussion that I felt in the discussions at the Regional Transportation Council, that this looked like a very plausible solution to explore.
Councilman Holmer.
Can I just get clarification? You're asking for our direction to complete the sort of, the application, just, we're not.
The application's almost complete at this point, just to submit it.
Okay, so we're not selecting one option over the other, we're just saying we'd like to continue to investigate this.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Rick Adella.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of this. Thank you for exploring new technologies, you know, with no commitment if it doesn't work out. I, I think that's, that's a great deal to, you know, to, to get in on the front end of something that if it does work out, you know, could, could, you know, really help traffic in the city. One thing, as, as we do explore this, that might merit asking Swift Cities about is how the safety in, you know, for occupants in these pods compares to other forms of public transportation, because one thing I was thinking about, you know, in seeing that picture with a small number of occupants in an enclosed space, you know, where they, they can't get out for the duration of, you know, from point to point, is, you know, if, if you get a, a bad actor on there, you know, how, how do we make sure somebody's not, you know, assaulted or something? Obviously, that can happen on other forms of public transit as well, but, you know, a lot of times, if you have, you know, like light rail or a bus, you know, you might have, you know, a bigger space, more people potentially on there, and, and, you know, safety and numbers, just wondering, you know, if, if, if safety is comparable to other forms of public transit. But I, I think it, it's an exciting potential new technology, so thank you for looking into it.
I'd actually like to address that.
Oh, oh, thank you.
We actually brought that up.
Oh, fantastic.
They've already approached us, based on, they were given the JPOD submittal, and they already approached us, said, we really like what you guys are doing, so, I probably should have put that in the presentation. But we asked the question about safety.
Fantastic.
And their response was, we have facial recognition on the, on the, the individual cars.
That's interesting, so, so that would be, I guess, somebody with a criminal record.
That's a deterrent.
What, what would happen if, if facial recognition says, you know, this, this is a registered sex offender, say? What, what happens when they try to?
We didn't explore what the, the consequences were, but we did ask the, actually, they, they offered up. One of the things that they've encountered is having a station at a private, let's, let's just say, one of the big corporate campuses, and actually having facial recognition, you can actually go to that corporate campus unless you are already registered with that particular campus.
Okay, gotcha. Well, this is just another example of our excellent City of Plano staff. Thank you, Brian, for, I, I already having thought of that and looked into it, and thank you for continuing to, to look into all of these things.
Yeah, and I wanted to add one point to that. When that discussion came up at the Regional Transportation Council, it was already pointed out that these are very much like an Uber vehicle, except there's no driver. So if you decide that you want to be the only occupant in this, you're the only occupant in it.
Oh, okay, fantastic.
So this is a, just a direction to move forward, so if I could just get a hand vote that we'd like you to move forward with the.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four. You ready, Karen?
Presentation of the fiscal year 2022.
I know, I, I'm thinking about you. Presentation of the 2022-23 status report. And three-year financial forecast. Karen Rhodes Whitley.
Okay.
Welcome back.
As Mark mentioned, the financial forecast that's included in your packet begins the budget process for 2324. The framework that we have here is we're presenting to the city with an opportunity to take a look ahead into the future, identifying the challenges and opportunities facing us over the next three years. This becomes the starting point for the development of the budget. Every annual budget adopted by the city council is required to be balanced. Any fund deficits you see in here will be rectified during the budget process. We're following the same themes as last year, and we have a new one. Under financial policies and ratings, we have included the five-year strategic financial plan that we're all currently working on. So in addition to that, we are going to maintain our quality infrastructure, keep up with our service demands, affordable property tax rate, and maintain our personnel. We do have several challenges that are still lingering for us. We have a labor scarcity issue, a lot of other places are having this too. We have some departments that are running a 20% attrition rate currently. Ongoing inflationary pressures, right now, the nationwide inflation rate is 6%. We're doing the same thing that we did last year, we're keeping a million dollars in our non-departmental cost center. It worked out really well for us last year when, say, like Parks and Rec got hit with a big contract increase because of inflation, we gave them the money through that. We're still playing catch-up from COVID. We have several supply chain issues. In addition to that, the equipment is really becoming more expensive, the inflationary factors on equipment, 30 to 40%. Discuss with Mark during the budget process this year, we are going to be adding an inflationary factor to our depreciation schedules to get more money back into ERF to get those police cars and fire trucks ordered. Our community investment program, as you know, has really substantially grown over the last several years. Right now, we have in play $531 million in projects. That's either projects that's being designed, it's being built, somehow, some kind of resource is touching it right now. Several departments are going to be needing additional personnel to meet those demands. Okay, the general fund is right now, for 2324, projected to be at 30 days. We do not have the information from the chief appraisers office yet. April 6th, they, Collin County is scheduled to have a meeting, and they're supposed to hand us out the preliminary roll. At that time, we will let all y'all know what's included in that, and then the Denton Central Appraisal District plans on handing us the information April 28th. This forecast assumes a 3% salary increase for civil service plus non-civil service individuals, and in addition, a 15% health insurance increase is going to be required again. We had one last year. The health insurance fund has started to stabilize from what we experienced during COVID. Of course, for, what, a year, two years, nobody went to the doctor because of COVID, and then all of a sudden, everything opened up, and because some of those, you know, it became more serious during the COVID event. So we've had some issues with that, and in fact, all around, I know a bunch of other cities are having the same thing. There's no new program or service enhancements included at all in the forecast. The forecast does maintain the tax rate of 41.76 cents right now in 2425 and 2526. In each of those years, we will need to move .25 cents from the operating rate over to the debt rate. In each of those years, that means $1.4 million will come out of operations into paying our debt. In addition, we do have some savings, $2.1 million over the next three years. I'm very excited about this. Our risk management fund, of course, we're self-insured even on our workers' comp. We have moved to a medical network that is starting to really save us money over there, so the transfer is going to go down about $2 million. This is a look at the general fund. You will see in 20, we're 30 days, 2324, 2425, 2526, right now, we do have additional revenues or program reductions will need to be done in those years, and of course, that's a couple of years out. Every time we do this forecast, we usually have the same scenario. So, but it, like we've said before, we will be making that up. Just some assumptions, we have a revenue model that is built, we use it every year. It runs either off a population assumption or an economic assumption, and that's how we tie the revenue projections. If it is a population-based, right now, the planning department is telling us we're going to increase .3% to 292,900, the following year, 1.2%, and then 2.6 to 301,200 in 2526. COG will provide us our estimates in April. What all this does is say if my revenue is trash collections, that is based on population increases, water revenue is based on population, a rec center or maybe a municipal court find is based on an indirect. So we take that, the direct would be .3%, indirect, we cut it in half. The same thing on the economic-based assumptions. We are saying right now that the inflationary rate for next year will be 4%, the year after that is 3%, and 3% the year after that. We are having a bond sale. In fact, Denise Tackey and I have rating calls next week. We're going to issue $80 million in GO bonds and $9 million in tax notes. Future issuances, $75 million in '24, $70 million in '25 and '26. This is all authority that stems from the projects that passed during the 2021 bond referendum. I already mentioned that we are going to be moving .25 cents from the operating rate over to the debt rate in that sense, starting in '24. This is a look at your assessed property valuations. This is going by because Bo Daffin was the chief appraiser, now we have a brand-new one. Anyway, he is planning, as I mentioned before, it's scheduled for April 6th that we're going to get our new information. This is based on some information that we received from the appraisal district before Bo actually retired. Looks like an increase of 3% on the existing property values and then new property value growth of $500 million in each of the years. For '25 and '26, it's going to be 2%. The tax rate's 41.76 cents. Your one cent on the tax rate is $5.4 million now. Sales tax, sales tax is still going up. Now, it has peaked, according to our sales tax consultant, and when he's talking about peaked, he means the amount of increases is actually starting to drop. Right now, for the first five months of collection, sales tax is up $3.1 million. Our February came in at $8.8 million, or a 14% increase. In addition to the robust retail and non-retail sales, inflation has definitely played a part in these sales tax increases. So as we move through the forecast, we will start seeing some dips in sales tax as far as our projection goes. In order to remain conservative, what we have done is done year-to-date sales tax and then added 4% on to each of the months till the end of the fiscal year. That gives you $113 million for this year. Our new three-year average for the forecast is $108 million. This, in addition, does the rolling of the three-year average, plus we've added on 4%. Our actual that was collected in '21, '22 was $108 million. This is just a picture of the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics that shows you where sales tax has been, and every month, you see back when we were doing the budget last year, we were at 9%. It has now gone down to 6%. This is our sales tax projection policy. Right now, we have already collected $38 million. We have placed in the budget, the adopted budget was $100 million, and then we are reestimating at the $113 million. This is just a look at the percentage changes from the prior year actual. You'll see last year was up 17.1%. This year, of course, that's gone down, it's going to be 5% over last year. Building and development-related revenues did spectacular, 2122, they are starting to go down. During the budget last year, we did include a negative 15%. We're doing the same thing again for next year. Salsa right now says we're running about a million dollars behind what we collected last year at this time. So for 2122, we collected $10 million. For our budget, or for our reestimate, we're going down about 18% to $8 million, and then an additional $15 million to get us $7 million going out through the forecast. Interest earnings are projected at $1.5 million a year. Interest earnings are projected at $1.5 million a year. Actuals came in at 1.8. Couple of things that are included on the expenditure side. As I mentioned before, we do have the 3% for civil service and non-civil service for all funds. That totals $7.4 million. It is included in the budget. We did not put anything else, though, in for '24, '25, or '25, '26. We do have the economic development incentive program is projected in there. The incentive, it's 2 cents on the tax rate. We plan on putting in there 10.7 million, all the way up to 11.3 million. We've included $35 million to go to the capital maintenance transfer. And then, funding is already included in there for library books and digital media. In addition, we have several projected CIP coming online. And on the operating side, the majority of this is for the Parkway Service Center that's going to open, the Fleet Service Center, and we've got two expansions planned. Fire Station 5 and Fire Station 8. The total over the period is $1.3 million. What is not included in here are any departmental requests. We're kicking off the budget process tomorrow with them. So, there is no mandates in here, no growth, no increased expenditure, no technology requests. All of these will be discussed during the budget process. And the city manager sits down with all the departments a week in June and gathers up all that information. Preliminary personnel requests. We always ask our departments every year, what do you think you're going to be asking for the, through the budget process? They've come up with 36 full-time positions totaling $3.7 million. 13 of them are for public safety, 15 other positions, and then our enterprise and other funds. There's an additional 13 positions. At the end of the day, last year, 52 positions were added totaling $5.3 million for this current year. Water and sewer is looking really good. As you, I'm sure you can remember, last year was very, very hot, especially July, August, September. We ended up receiving some extra funding. The city council was very generous with us, and we were allotted an additional $7 million that was deeply needed. We needed $2 million. It was a supplemental preparation. We needed $2 million to purchase an extra generator at the Ridgeview Pump Station and an extra $5 million for two different sewer projects. The Plano Parkway Parallel Interceptor and the Dallas North Trunk Phase 2 projects. We have included all the increases that North Texas Municipal Water District has let us know about. These increases here are from the fall of 2022. They are currently working on and revising some of these numbers. Could go up, could go down. Right now, this is what we know. Now, we do know, I know we had kind of mentioned this, started talking to council about this last August. We're going to need, during this budget work session, to decide what we're going to do about the water and sewer CIP. We've been on a pay-as-you-go system since 1993, and it's worked out very well for us. However, now, we are not keeping up with the projects that we need to have funded. So, we are going to have Dan come and talk to y'all and talk more about the different projects. We'll be working on this, though, over the next couple of months. Okay, just to highlight a couple of other funds. The Kivision and Tourism Fund is doing quite well. In addition, we did go ahead and take out the short-term. That's where the short-term rental hot taxes go. We did take that out for the coming up future years, just based on the different conversations y'all are currently having. Municipal Drainage Fund is doing really well. We'll talk to you about sustainability and environmental services. It has not done well, but we have ways to solve that. The Recreation Revolving Fund and Golf Course Fund have done marvelous. Rec Revolving came through spectacular through the COVID period. So, it is really up and running, and our Capital Maintenance Fund is too. If you remember, we did pass a $2.50 increase per month for the 95-gallon trash container. Anyway, even with that, we're still having some issues here. You will see the red at the bottom. That would be the dollar amount. Our actual financial policies for the Environmental Service Fund is 15 days. The amount at the bottom is what would be required, additional revenues or program reductions to meet that. So, right now, we have hired New Gen Strategies and Services. They are conducting a full cost-of-service plan and a five-year rate model. It is estimated to be completed in June. July, when we kick off the budget with y'all, we will be bringing recommendations on how to shore up this fund. In addition, we also have our own in-house composting study. It's also in progress. So, this fund was really, really hit with the cost of equipment. Has really gone up on them. Also, a pain point is we used to collect $700,000, $800,000 per year in recycling revenue. That has completely dried up, completely. Now, it's zero. In addition, we also included in here a 3% salary increase and the 15% health insurance increase. We did have an overtime overage due to trouble with recruiting and retention. As I mentioned before, that's back to that labor scarcity issue we have going on. So, we are definitely working on this. In fact, we had a conference call earlier today, plan on bringing you back recommendations on this fund. Capital Maintenance Fund, we like to have $20 million as our fund balance, and it's succeeding. The, a couple of years ago, we went back through because the Capital Maintenance Fund wasn't doing all that well. We took out 20-year projects and put them on the bond referendum, and that has really worked out very well for us. In addition, this fund also, when, on our sales tax cap policy, when that comes over, we've ended up with $28, yeah, $28 million extra funded in here because of that sales tax cap policy. So, this is completely shored up here. Just want to talk real quick about the budget calendar. July 26th, you will receive your recommended budget by the city manager and the CIP. Copies will be made at libraries and on the website. August 10th is our Budget Town Hall meeting. August 14th, we will have the presentation of the Capital Improvement Program that night, a public hearing on the operating budget and community investment program. You will approve the tax roll. And also, that's the evening where you discuss the proposed tax rate because the next day, it goes into the newspaper. August 17th, now, this is a change. August 17th is a Thursday evening. Usually, we do a Saturday budget work session. Normally, that would have been scheduled for the 19th. Mark, who I'm sure will talk to you about this here in a minute. Anyway, we want to try maybe doing it on a Thursday evening, starting at like 5:30 or 6 o'clock. We'll do the budget work session, and of course, the grant funding work session is included in there. September 11th, you have a public hearing on the tax rate. The council will adopt the operating budget, CIP, and set the tax rate. And then, of course, October 1st, we begin again. What questions can I answer?
It was very comprehensive. Thank you.
Good.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to add a few comments. First of all, Karen and her team always do a fantastic job of kind of getting things prepared so that we can start our budget process. So, she and Casey and Jason and the entire team do a fantastic job. A few, a few key aspects to keep in mind. Number one, the water and sewer capital side of things. You know, we talk a lot about roads, but what's underneath the roads matters just as much, and it's aging just as fast. So, keeping up with that infrastructure is going to be critically important, and we're going to have a big discussion about issuance of debt instead of cash financing those as a way of helping relieve some of the rate pressure that we've had over the last couple of years, but also to be more aggressive about our water and sewer infrastructure, which, which we think is, is the right move for the city. The other thing that Karen mentioned was the Thursday work session. We've traditionally had a Saturday work session. Y'all have gotten very efficient over, over the last several years. And so, we usually don't spend a full day. Actually, we don't even spend half a day most times doing this. And understanding how y'all's schedules are with families and everything else, I'd rather give that time back and, and extend a Thursday night to get through that work session and see if we can be more efficient that way. And I would sense that that's probably fine with y'all. But if, if there's protests, I'm going to be out in the parking lot later. Y'all can find me out there. But I, I truly think that this budget, I want to make sure that y'all are fully aware. Aging infrastructure requires a lot more work, and it's a lot more costly. And I know that y'all have, have heard that from some of our cost consultants that we've had and some of our strategic financial plans. The need for personnel has not gone down. We are doing a compensation philosophy study that we're, we're almost ready to kick off. I think we're just through the RFP process, and we're still not there yet. And taking care of our people matters to us. So, having great talent to do this work is important. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get through that sometime this summer. It may not be in time for this budget, but we're going to work hard to, to get as far as we can. But with that, I wanted to just tell you, we're prepared to bring back what the needs of the organization are. But as true to form, I will be meeting with each one of you individually as part of this to make sure I understand y'all's needs and concerns and make sure that we incorporate as much as we possibly can into the budget. So, with that.
Any questions for Karen? Councilman Williams?
No, no, after you, after you.
Well, it's not actually so much a question for Karen. Sorry you had to get back up. I blame the mayor.
Oh. You can sit down, Karen.
I think, I think one of the reasons we've been so efficient with our Saturday workshops is because for the past few years, we have adopted the no-revenue rate. So, the discussion went through kind of without a whimper. I don't know that we're going to have that option too much longer. First, to your point, taking care of our aging infrastructure requires money. Second, inflation continues to be a burden. I'm glad, glad we're not at 9% anymore. I hope we don't return to it, but 6% is still kind of crushing. To that end, I want to, and I know we're not going to have the compensation study until it's too late for this budget cycle. But within this budget cycle, I would like to explore what options we have to help offset the impact of inflation for our staff.
Great.
There we go.
Councilman Rick Adelli?
Thank you, Mayor.
I didn't know you were through. I apologize.
Oh, sorry. Did I cut you off?
No.
Oh, okay. Fantastic. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, on a similar note to what Councilmember Williams mentioned about taking care of our excellent people, you know, obviously, the labor scarcity issue is something that every, every city and every organization is facing. It, it's obviously a significant problem and something I wish we, we weren't facing. You know, I was, I've, you know, talked recently with, you know, with the Plano Police Association about how we're understaffed there, you know, crossing guards we've been hearing about, understaffed there. And I, I know those are just two examples illustrating, you know, across the organization and across every organization right now, there's just, there's just not, not enough people to fill the authorized positions. So, that's obviously a significant challenge. The fact that there, there are budgeted salaries for positions that are unfilled also means, of course, that there, there are savings from that in the budget. And I wondered to, to the point about taking care of our people and also perhaps as a strategy to try to increase those staffing levels, you know, closer to where we need them to be. Would it be possible to look at using some of those savings for sign-on bonuses for, you know, for new employees and one-time retention bonuses for, for existing employees?
Yeah, I will tell you, in the presentation I just gave you, we did our first pass of salaries. So, any openings, all that money's gone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, it's already rolled over.
It's already in there. Now, the second process is we go and do real salaries at the end of May. We call up each of the department heads, say, when are you hiring for this? When are you hiring for this? When are you hiring for this? We will have more salary savings, but as of tonight, they're all gone in there. So.
Okay, okay, gotcha. So, so, so they were there, but they're already rolled into what we saw tonight. Okay.
And then, of course, we include a 4% attrition rate for the general fund, water and sewer, municipal drainage, and I think solid waste is four funds. Anyway, the other ones, we don't have that much attrition over there. But to make a long story short, yes, we will have more savings. It's just not here today.
Okay, gotcha. Well, well, thank you for that. I was just thinking if, if we had money, you know, that's been budgeted, that was sitting around, that maybe there was a way to use that to try to, you know, increase both retention and recruitment. But it sounds like it's already rolled into.
Well, the savings are. Did you want to talk to them about the, the two? We, we did set some back for the, that plan, the one you're doing the RFP on for implementation.
Correct. So, Mayor and council, part of, part of what we're planning to Councilman Williams' perspective is, you know, the timing of the study, we are unsure where we're going to be right now as far as if it's going to be in time for the budget, to be incorporated into the budget. But we did anticipate in this current presentation to set aside some funds so that if it does happen afterwards, we can begin that transition period to that, this next fiscal year, that we wouldn't have to wait a full year to begin implementation. So, we have set aside a, a few funds to be, or some funds, not a few funds, but some funds, to begin that transition period because we, we felt like taking care of our employees and beginning that transition as soon as possible was going to be important for us. So, that is, that is incorporated within this as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mayor Protan?
Yes, so I'm hoping that that feasibility study, or whatever you're calling it, is going to include looking at, I know it's looking at everybody's salaries, but specifically at public safety because I've heard that in the past, we were at a higher percentage of what we paid compared to other cities and that we may have dropped, and so it's making it harder for us to recruit compared to other cities. So, I know we've, we've been doing this. Everybody gets 3%. And I know we want to be fair, but if we're losing our competitive advantage over to other cities for public safety recruiting, I think that's something we really need to look at.
So, we've, we have taken the, the approach, and for sure, I've, I've had a number of conversations. I actually did station visits with Chief Biggerstaff and listened to, to folks out there as well. And it did come up as, as a concern as far as our, our competitive aspect of things. But I would, I would share that whether it is a mechanic in our fleet shop, whether it's an accountant that's cutting checks, whether it's somebody cutting grass, it, we're facing scarcity and competition at every single position we have in, in the city. So, it's important that we get the philosophy right, and that's really what the study is, is, is going out and saying, if we want to be a city of excellence, what does it take from a market comparison perspective to be able to do that? And public safety is always going to be a priority for us to make sure that we're, we're competitive in that area.
I agree. Okay. That's a first pass. We appreciate it. We know there's going to be 100 more. So, with that, no further business. We're adjourned.